I don't know if that clock's historically always wrong. No, it's right on the computer, too. Come on, it never changes. It's washed water and never boils, right?
Call this meeting to order. Anyone for the open forum? Anyone for the open forum? Okay. At this time, please join us up here for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the November tenth, two thousand and four, meeting of the city council.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is we have some annual meetings this evening. The first one is with the Community Services Commission.
Reed Bornholdt, I'm the chair of the Community Services Commission. Prepared a brief year-end report of our accomplishments of the past year, and will be presenting a few of the highlights here. Responding to an increasing demand for 5K runs and private fundraising events, we created a policy to address special events in parks and streets. The new policy sets our permit be to be in line with that of other cities and sets a participant capacity based on parking availability and other factor. Policy also limits the event number of events that can be issued in a given park or on the streets so that these events have a lower impact on residents and the users of the park. The twenty-five-year-old equipment at Vets Park was removed and replaced with new state-of-the-art equipment. This was no ordinary play equipment or equipment project, as Veterans Park is the home of the city's premier play equipment and is a destination that's heavily used by the community and the surrounding. The commission utilized Richfield Connect to first gather ideas and preferences of the residents. The proposals were then scored by some members of the Community Services Commission, and the top two designs were again featured on Richfield Connect. The winning design contains an eighty-foot-long zip line, a twenty-five-foot climbing net, exercise equipment, a climbing rock, and much more. We're very pleased with the result, and as a bonus, the contractor transported the old equipment to a third-world country for some repurposing. The commission conducted a search to find a suitable location to relocate the city's community garden. Currently located on MAC property, the garden was experiencing vandalism and theft, and our desire was to relocate it elsewhere in Richfield to a safer location. The commission concluded, however, that no park site was big enough to accommodate all one hundred eighty-one garden plots, and that dividing the garden into smaller gardens at multiple sites would be too costly and more difficult to manage. Instead, a plan was developed to keep the garden at its current location and to provide participants with an ID pass and appropriate signage to encourage reporting of unauthorized people in the garden. Airport police provided help by providing better patrolling and enforcement, and we recently received a report that there was minimal theft and vandalism in the garden this past season. The Community Services Commission's scope of work goes beyond parks and recreation. This year, we worked with public work staff on a number of initiatives, including a no-mo policy for certain areas in our parks, Sweet Streets, Emerald Ash Borer updates, and recently the visual quality guidelines for sixty-sixth Street in Portland Avenue. Replacing the play equipment at Garfield Park is one of our next projects. The old-style wood equipment you see on this slide has already been removed for safety reasons. The commission really recently finalized a process to select new equipment for the park and will again utilize Richfield Connect to engage the community. We will get started with this project this winter. One of the commission's main tasks is to review and recommend a five-year capital improvement plan for each park each year, or for all the parks each year. We jump into this process at the start of the year. It seems there's never a shortage of needs for the upkeep and revitalization of our park system. We take seriously our charge to wisely allocate our limited capital funds from the liquor store proceeds. So in closing, as chair of the commission, I want to thank all of the eleven members of the commission for their hard work and dedication, and I look forward to working with them next year to further advise the council for the betterment of our parks and other initiatives. And I need to add, too, that we would not be able to do most of our work or do it as well if we didn't have the oversight and help from Mr. Jim Toppitz over in John Evans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm layers on to this commission, and one of the things that's impressive is, you know, that the community gardens. Karen came to the commission and, you know, laid out her plan and her vision, and we kind of worked out some ideas with her, took it back to the fall board, which I'm layers on to it, too, and we, I thought we came out with a real sound policy that involved the airport police and the residents, because when they had the open discussion for residents, they thought it was a great idea, and apparently it worked, and that's what it takes is with the whole, you know, the commissions get together as well as the users of the garden. So I was very impressed with that. And the other thing I want to mention is, you know, when we did Sweet Streets and then the Penn Avenue, you know, that's another level of vetting these city projects, and I think, you know, it also lets community-wide discussion as to what's going to happen to the future of our community. And I want to thank Reed, and certainly Jim and John have done a great job, but Reed has done a great job in chairing the commission, and I really am impressed with the camaraderie. At the same time, I think we really work hard and do good work, but it's really an enjoyable commission to be part of.
I think, Reed, it's interesting when we do the interviews, and relatively new members of the community or people want to get introduced to the community and what's going on, the Community Services Commission is one that we recommend or suggest to say it has its finger in so many things that happen in the community, there's no better way to get introduced to what's happening and what potential is here and what we're doing than service or working with the Community Service Commission. And that's represented, you know, emphatically by what you presented up here, what you've been doing just this past year. So it really is an exciting place to be in the city and exciting to watch what you do. So I appreciate it much. Thank you. The next annual meeting is with the Transportation Commission. You had a high bar, Marty.
Mayor Protem and members of the Richfield City Council, Marty Kirsch, sixty-seven, twenty-five, Penn Avenue South, the chair of the Transportation Commission. Well, most of you probably are aware of the fact that this commission has been really working hard, and I'm very thankful for all of the members that you have put on that commission. We have worked hard and diligently as we've brought things together and done our homework so that we had things that we could present to the city council for their final approval. From two thousand thirteen to two thousand fourteen, we monitored the Richfield Parkway Connection Project progress and transportation impacts, reviewed and provided input on the design of the inner-city regional trails and made recommendations for approval, hosted an open house and gathered feedback on the four-to-three lane conversion of Nicklet and Penn Avenues as part of the Hennepin County Mill and Overlay on these particular roads, monitored and provided feedback on the Mendott I-494-I-35W interchange study, the Orange Line BRT conceptual layout that will improve the transit service to Richfield, including a station at Knox Avenue near Seventy-Sixth Street, reviewed the safe routes to school plan and provided comments before recommending the plan for approval, led the county road reconstruction progress plan to date, including the following effects, hosted an initial open house for Sixty-Sixth Street and Portland Avenue to gather feedback from the public on perceived positive and negative existing conditions along both roadways so that we may be address them in preliminary designs, led and gathered the project goals for the road project based on input from the initial open house, hosted a total of six additional project open houses, and attended various community events to present design and concepts to the public and gather feedback, and then recommended revisions based on the input, parented with the Community Services Commission to lead the creation of the visual quality guideline document, reviewed layouts and made formal preliminary design recommendations for approval for each segment of the proposed base on the all input for those that we had gathered for the various roads that we're talking about, especially Sixty-Sixth Street in Portland, and then began analysis and major intersections to determine recommendations on traffic control designs. So again, I want to thank our, we had some good staff people, in particular Jeff is our lead person, and there were others, and then the commission did an outstanding job in working through all of these various things as we bring them to the city council for your approval.
Thank you. I would suggest that I've attended some of the meetings, there's been a lot, there's been a lot of debate, some of it fairly strenuous, and throughout the entire thing, you guys have stayed on track and you made the recommendations you felt were best for the city. I know that there's going to be people that are going to dispute every section of Sixty-Sixth from Xerxes to Cedar, but it's always hard to get a consensus. All you can do is do the best job possible and put it out there, and I think that the Transportation Commission certainly endeavored to do that. So I appreciate that, and I know that everybody in the city will two years from now when it's done.
Well, and when you consider how long that roadway is and that there are some separate sections that are very different from another, that's what made it really difficult.
I think it made it more difficult, but actually, in hindsight and looking back at it, it was probably the only way that you could really organize that and put any semblance of balance to it is by breaking it up, because those sections are distinctly different. And so I think the way you approached it was laudable. It was tough work.
So next year, two thousand fifteen, will be Portland Avenue, and then after that will come Sixty-Sixth Street.
And then everybody will really be gnashing their teeth at you because they won't be able to get back through it in a long time.
Absolutely. But I think the community needs to remember that those roadways have been around for about sixty years or thereabouts, and we're planning them for seventy-five years after we're finished with them, so we need to kind of take the long view. It's easy to say, well, let's keep them like they are, they've done all right, but who knows where we're going to be in seventy-five years, and we want to have presented to you the best we can so that people seventy-five years from now will say, boy, those people really did a good job in putting that road together.
I think while that work is ongoing, Marty, all we need to do is remind them what it was like driving down Sixty-Sixth Street last winter.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if they've got short memories, we've got pictures we can show them.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you again. This time, council discussion and hats off to hometown hits. Edwina will probably have a lot to say, we're going to go left to right. Tom, you got anything to?
Well, yeah, say, I thank you, Mayor Protem. A couple of things, I want to thank those that showed up for our Veterans Day celebration at the All Veterans Memorial. Cold night, it was about twenty of us that showed up, but what's interesting about what we do different on that night is it's educational piece. We actually talk about what we're doing and why we're doing it. So people that show up, they understand what the three volleys are, what the bugle is, and then they showed the, was it the VFW that did the rites for dead veterans in that and symbolized it with the rose and all that. So I learn a lot every time I go there, but as part of the Beyond Yellow Ribbon, we're going to vow that we're going to, every Veterans Day at least do something there, no matter how cold it is. The other thing I want to recognize is Nancy Gibbs' retirement today. Nancy worked tirelessly on very many elections, even recounts, and today was her last day after twenty-nine and a half years, and I wish her a great retirement, and she should be well missed. I mean, she was a very important part here. Also, I'm starting to see Christmas lights go up, and there's one in Portland you see all the time in that. I want to thank the folks that take the time to put Christmas lights up, because it really does kind of make the neighborhood look better, and it seems like we're getting competition even on my block, I've done it every year. Now, people that are from other countries are putting up, and they came over tonight, when should we turn them on? They weren't sure. So I think it welcomes everybody in the community, it just makes Richfield look that much better. And we had fantastic Halloween displays this year that were on the news and that, and I just want to thank people that want to display the good side of Richfield. So that's all I have.
I can speak, at least in one household, when they should be turned on, and it's not before Thanksgiving, because I made the mistake of doing it at my house. Won't do that again. You know, when you talk about the streetlights, you know, you drive around and I'm finding, you know, I'm walking much more because I got to get the dogs out, and you see much more when you're, when you slow down and you're walking, but I was coming across Sixty-Sixth and I was at Sixty-Sixth and Lindell, and I looked at Citi Bella, and this may not be the first year, but they have some outstanding arrangements on their balconies, and I've got vertigo, I don't know how the heck or who goes out there and does that. But I mean, they're really elaborate, it looks like it's almost professionally organized, and I don't know if the homeowners association offers prizes or it's an association-wide thing, let's really pretty it up, but it's, it really, really is well done. A lot of lights, but none of it's garish, none of it is overdone. So I mean, that's, you say, you drive down the main streets and you see that, you go out in the side streets and you see the individual stuff, and I will say this without equivocation, I know that there's prizes awarded for doing your house and everything, but from season to season, holiday to holiday, I can promise you, there's no one that puts more work into it than the chair of our planning commission, Rick Jabs. It doesn't matter what, Pam Shaker, you go by it, too, I mean, it doesn't matter what season or what holiday it is, he does that thing up to the nth degree. And I saw him and his wife out there putting up some decorations the other day, and it's obviously a labor of love because he changes it with the seasons and with the holidays. That just is kind of pride in neighborhood, pride in ownership, and it's, you kind of like to have that in your neighborhood because you can walk by and realize how lazy you might be, so. One other thing, and this is more for discussion that may be a work session, I was at the Human Rights Commission last week, and Sean O'Leary and Debbie had told me that there's been, and Reed, you may have attended this, a meeting of the chairs of a lot of the commissions, and one of the issues that Sean had mentioned to me is some of the bylaws of the commissions themselves are somewhat archaic and aren't really applicable to the changes, and it requires, I think, an ordinance from the council has to do it, and I'm wondering if it might not be a good idea for the individual chairs to meet with their commissions and see if there's some things in there. And by way of example, one of the things that Sean had pointed out to me is that on the Human Rights Commission, it talks about eleven members shall be appointed for terms of three years, except that a person appointed to fill a vacancy occurring prior to the expiration of the term for which the predecessor in that term was appointed shall be appointed only for the remainder. We know that, but then it goes on to say that, let me just see where it says that. It says, upon the expiration of the member's term of office, a member shall continue to serve until his successor is appointed and qualified, which doesn't make any sense, really, in the sense that they carry over, there's a gap. What they wanted to do is try to clean that language up and make it more appropriate, and also I know the Human Rights Commission went through an issue with a person that wanted to stay on the commission but was unable to ever attend the meetings, and they had a hard time trying to figure out how, as much as we appreciate his interest, he's not adding and he's not contributing, and over the course of the last couple of years, the Human Rights has been a much sought-for commission. And so as long as you've got him in there, even though he can't make it, he doesn't want to be removed, so he won't voluntarily remove, and they don't want to go to the steps to take him out. So what, the problem being is, is if people want to be here and we're forced not, and we don't have a spot because somebody is carrying over, even though for, he can't make it, there has to be some method or some way set up. So maybe having some discussions, taking a look, each commission looking at its own rules and bylaws and seeing if there's some things they may want to change. We can, I don't know, I guess I'll defer to the city attorney whether we can do it on consent calendar or how we do that, but maybe it might be a good idea for them to take a look at their individual bylaws and see if they need some updating and, you know, modernizing.
Mayor Protem and council, actually staff and I, interestingly, have been just having this discussion about commissions and commission bylaws and our planning, and that was one of the issues that came up in our discussion, and we do plan to review those bylaws and come back to the council with some recommendations on changes.
So if it's okay, if Sean's not watching, I can take credit, then, is that? Thank you.
Well, I don't really have that much, but I will say, recently, we received a flyer from Wood Lake, and they always have activities going, no matter how cold it is, no matter how hot it is, and you've always got school kids there, you've always got, you know, adults that are, you know, I think recently, I don't know how cold it was, and they had like two hundred people that showed up for an activity. So you really have to hand it to, you know, to Karen and her staff, they're just outstanding. I mean, and they provide a program that is obviously useful, so hats off to them. And I also wanted to talk about Nancy Gibbs. I think, I remember when Tom Ferber left, and she was positive that she couldn't do the job, and I think everybody, you know, came on board and said, yeah, you can do it, you can do it, and she's done an outstanding job. One of the things that's really difficult in that department is to keep abreast of all, the legislature is constantly changing the laws, and she's always right on top of everything, and she's always, you call her about something, she doesn't know, she'll get the answer, she'll get back to you within an hour or two, and, you know, I think it's sad, I hope that we don't have staff leaving all at the same time, you know, well, it's, because I think she's really, has got a lot of institutional memory, she's done an outstanding job, and, you know, whoever takes, you know, her place, I think will have big shoes to fill, but at the same time, I'm confident that she's left a good ship in order, so I commend her for that. And I just wanted to wish everyone blessed Thanksgiving and hope you have good yummy delicious food, and I look, and I, we look forward to the New Year, so that's, I think that's about it.
That's great, thank you. Tom?
Yeah, sorry, I'm here, Protem, I forgot to give my NOC report. We had a noise oversight committee meeting, and we got some new members on there, so we're going to have another learning curve on the new members understanding all the technology, but the interesting item was, if you're aware of, Edina and St. Louis Park had requested their own little noise monitoring, and they did the remote monitoring and that, and the results were as expected for the noise monitoring, and actually almost proved that the current sites validated what they were expecting in the field. So all the, these are the different remote sites out, and the contention was Edina was claiming that, and St. Louis Park, that they didn't think that the monitors could pick up the aircraft and validate what actual noise was in their neighborhoods, and when in fact, the remote sites were, it was just uncannily right on target, right on, with everything they expected. I think Sunfish Lake is the next one that they're going to do that, too, also. So cities that aren't comfortable with the monitoring, they're going to go through and do it. We have a number of monitors in Richfield that cover us. There's nothing new on RNAV, anything like that. We did get an interesting report from the tower, and they explained why they use the northwest flow most often, and the answer is kind of complex, but that gives them the most output for the airport, get the most planes off safely at the same time. But we also have a northwest wind that's prominent in Minnesota, so that kind of dictates which runway they use, and they also talked about the one-seven departure, which is the new runway, and they can use that mostly when there's a south flow. They really can't use it during a north flow, and because planes would be crossing each other. And one thing that was interesting, one member commented about, well, why can't they send the people off the left runway and turn them right, or right one way and turn them left? And what the interesting part is, it's all about departures and where they're going, which way they turn them. And if you think about Minnesota, they're in the northern hemisphere, a lot of them are going to turn south, so they're going to turn that direction, and it's also where their route is and where their next point is, is where they turn them. The only thing that RNAV would help is we'll have that route defined a little better. I think some of the residents might have known in the last few days, the planes are probably flying over City Hall again, they were today for a while, because we got a, upper winds were just ungodly and pushing the planes off course, and that won't happen with RNAV. RNAV, the planes follow a ground track, the current thing, they give them a heading, and they're all at the mercy of the wind, so wherever the wind puts them is where they're going to fly, so.
I'm wondering, Mr. Devich, do those planes keep you awake from your nap?
Only sometimes.
Good, good.
Just the noisier ones.
Good, good.
And to add on it, we're going to have a few meetings here at City Hall. They're going to use this facility because the MAC meeting room will be refurbished or remodeled, and so I'll let council know when that is, and maybe have a chance to stop in and see how the MAC meetings go, and maybe get a little better understanding of what goes on in the meetings.
Will that be in the Bartholomew Room?
I think we're going to do it right here in the council chamber, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we like the audio portion and that, and I've put the little twist on MAC to record them events, because I think it's important that somebody can go back and review them, they're documented, and then if you were to want to see it, or any resident, they could actually go back and see what happens in a MAC meeting. They've been resistant for a while, they have recorded some of the interesting speakers we've had from Delta, explaining how Delta schedules airplanes and people from the tower and that, so it's in our work plan for two thousand fifteen, looking at recording them all and possibly having available to citizens, so.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of city council, members in the audience. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions have also been approved, and no further council action on these items would be necessary. actions have also been approved, and no further council action on these items would be necessary. Tonight, there are five items on the Consent Calendar, starting with Item A, which is consideration of the approval of resolutions amending the two thousand fourteen-fifteen labor agreements with police officers and detectives, LELS Local 123, and police supervisors, LELS Local 162. Item B is consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing an accounting change from an enterprise or proprietary fund to three special revenue funds for the Recreation Enterprise Fund. Item C is consideration of the approval of a contract with Graymont WLLC Company for the purchase of one thousand four hundred tons of quicklime in the amount of two hundred twenty-five thousand three hundred and thirty dollars for water treatment in two thousand fifteen. Item D is consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing the Seventy-Seventh Street Underpass Project Application Submission for the Federal Surface Transportation Funds under the Regional Solicitation Process, and that goes through the Metropolitan Council. And finally, Item E, which is consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing the Source Water Protection Plan Implementation Grant Agreement between the City of Richfield and the Minnesota Department of Health, and that concludes tonight's Consent Calendar.
Move approval of the items on the Consent Calendar?
I'll second it, and I'd like a discussion on that if you wouldn't mind. I'd like to have Steve explain Item D about the process about the Seventy-Seventh Street Underpass or Mike Esling, so the people can understand we're moving forward on this item.
Sure. Let me just give you a quick update, and I was going to actually do some of that during the City Manager Report, but, you know, that'll save me from doing that.
Okay.
You know, right now, what's happening is, we're still trying to find clarity over at the Legislature and through MINDOT as to what was intended with respect to the local road improvement project funds that were allocated in the last Legislature for local road improvements, and which we thought we had a substantial amount of money set aside in, and in fact, of course, our project was actually mentioned in the legislation. We submitted an application, and that application then was, let's see, they looked for some additional information from us, we submitted it early last week, and I understand that, I think on Thursday of last week, the Commissioner of Transportation was meeting with his staff regarding our application, and I haven't heard what the outcome of that was. The money that we're talking about here is the federal surface transportation money that's administered out of the, well, through the Met Council, they're federal funds, but allocated through Met Council. The maximum that you can get for a project here is seven million dollars. The tricky part is, and I'll let Mike talk about this in greater detail, but when you're making an application for those kinds of funds, you have to have a project that has some funding behind it, and the tricky thing is, it's another one of those chicken and egg arguments, where it's really dependent upon us getting a significant piece of money out of the legislative action from this past legislative session to start the project that would put us in a position to be able to get up to seven million dollars for the project through these funds, but I'll let Mike talk about it in more detail because he's much more familiar with it than I am.
Sure. Yeah, the application that's before you tonight is the same source that we used for our federal portion for Portland Avenue and that the county got for Sixty-Sixth Street, both seven million dollar portions in the last go-around for the solicitation, so it is that same process. What they ask for when we do that is, how are you paying for the rest of the project? In the case of Portland Avenue, we had city funds and we had county funds and the same on Sixty-Sixth Street. Now, when we come to the underpass, the two grants that we're applying for that are both being considered, one relies on the other, and so either one could say, well, so you, do you have the money in hand yet? So we're kind of playing both sides on this, and we're applying at the same time, and hopefully they'll talk to each other.
But if we, excuse me, can I? But if we do get the money appropriated by the Legislature, that's something that we can leverage, right?
Yes, exactly, through this solicitation that we're approving tonight, that, we're using that money to leverage the additional seven million then in this grant.
Right, good, good. And then we expect to probably ask other entities to help us out.
You know, let me answer, I think that, you know, if we get the kind of money that we ask for from the state right now on this first part of the project out of the local road improvement funds, I think that would put us in a really good position with this application, because I think our project, and Mike, I think our project would score extremely high.
Yeah.
And make it.
We meet the criteria.
Yeah. I just have a feeling that we would probably get the seven million. Now, what we're basically asking for on the very front end through the state Legislature and through the Department of Transportation, who's actually really in charge of how the money gets out now, trying to get money to do the acquisition and the engineering, to get those two pieces done, and then, you know, in the end, if we were to get that money, and I'm confident we'll get some portion of it, and we got the seven million, that would put us awful close to having all the funding for the project, we probably at that point in time would do, would probably get a couple of other sources. Well, first of all, Free Rivers Park District would put in some money because they put a trail in with it, I think the City of Richfield really would have to step up and put some money into it, and we know, we've talked about doing that before, and I think we'd have to go back to the state and probably get a little bit more money from them, although if we, excuse me, got the seven million, and the first part that we're asking for right now, it probably wouldn't amount to a whole lot that the state would have to give us to finish it.
Well, to ask for that seven million dollars, does, do we go directly to the feds or does it go through the, through MINDOT?
It goes through MINDOT.
Okay. So they actually know that it would, it would help us if we got the amount that the Legislature appropriated, that if we had that, it would?
You would hope so.
Yes. Yeah, exactly. Say your prayers.
Yeah, I think you pretty much have it.
Yeah.
Okay, the Consent Calendar has been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed. This item for consideration is to conduct and continue a public hearing regarding the sale of remnant parcels located at sixty-two forty-five and sixty-three oh-one Bloomington Avenue South. Due to a discrepancy in the scheduling of the published notice, the public hearing set for November twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen needs to be opened and then continued to the December ninth, two thousand fourteen regular City Council meeting. The city purchased sixty-two forty-five Bloomington Avenue and sixty-three oh-one Bloomington Avenue, as well as sixty-three hundred sixteenth Avenue for right-of-way as part of the Richfield Parkway Connection project. The alignment of the new roadway created remnants of sixty-two forty-five and sixty-three oh-one Bloomington Avenue that are larger than what the city has determined is necessary for long-term right-of-way needs. The property owners adjacent to these remnant parcels at sixty-two thirty-nine Bloomington and sixty-three oh-five Bloomington approached the city with an interest in purchasing a portion of those remnants. Property owners at sixty-two thirty-nine Bloomington Avenue South and sixty-three oh-five Bloomington Avenue South have signed purchase agreements for their desired remnant parcels. In addition, the Planning Commission passed the acquired, or the attached required resolution finding that the sale of remnant parcels is consistent with the Richfield Comprehensive Plan. This time, I, appears I need to open the public hearing?
Yes.
Anybody have anything to say? This time, I would move to close the public hearing. No?
Continue.
You need to continue.
Move to continue.
Move to continue the public hearing until the City Council meeting of December ninth, two thousand fourteen.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think, let me just see what, I believe that brings us to the City Managers' Report.
Mayor Protem, members of the City Council, it does indeed, and inasmuch as I gave it about five minutes ago, I don't have anything else to say.
Thank you for that. Claims and payroll?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There being no further business, I adjourn the City Council meeting.
Good, good job.
Thank you.